Twenty twenty five, five seventeen, opening prayer, Steve Hope from Spurden County Baptist Church.
Father, representing the City of Ohio, also representing the North Canton Ministerial Association. So if you'd bow with me, please. Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all of us gathered here this evening. I thank you for your many and abundant blessings and for the ability to be involved in useful work for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Lord, you said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you've established those authorities to promote peace and order and justice. So therefore, I pray for our mayor, pray for our city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I'm asking that you graciously grant them compassion to love one another as you would and treat each other with dignity and respect. With discernment to identify the needs and recognize the successes of both the individual and the community. For wisdom to make decisions within your will and for the common good. And as always, for personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around the city of North Canton. I pray this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I, Michael S. Stevens, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation of due integrity and justice.
Amber Ware?
Here.
Amber Owen?
Here.
Amber Cleister?
Here.
Amber Stroy?
Here.
Amber Warren?
Here.
Amber Matheny?
Here.
Amber Orr?
Here.
Seven present.
I have motion and a second to approve as presented minutes from April seventh, twenty twenty five, Committee of the Hall. The minutes from April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, Committee of the Hall and City Council, and the April two thousand twenty five final. Approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay, at this time, Mayor Wilder is invited to the floor to present proclamation for the seven twenty market in celebration of the tenth anniversary of the seven twenty.
Thank you, President Stroy, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for attending, and our scouts, Steve Hope, for their prayers. I'm going to call to the podium with me, David Lynn Shimko. Had the pleasure of meeting these two people back about ten years ago. They brought out an idea called seven twenty market. And with me, I brought Lynn and David. And would you just take a couple of minutes and kind of walk us through how we got here today? That's a lot, you know?
Yeah, it's a lot. Well, so ten years ago, and it started as just a small idea of something that we could do to support small businesses and craftsmen and artists. And something that we could, a place where they could go. We were looking to do that ourselves to sell in an event like that, but there was nothing that we saw around us, so we made it. And we met, we met with Mayor Wilder at the time, Chief Wilder. Built area businesses and organizations, and they all said it was a great idea, and then now here we are. It snowballed in mushroomed minutes. People are really appreciative.
Very good. I'm going to have to share a proclamation with you. Then I have just a little bit of summary again on all the good that you've done. So.
We're better at this than you guys.
It's all fine. So this proclamation reads, and whereas the seven twenty market is a small family-owned business with its roots in North Canton, Ohio. Owners Dave and Lynn Shimko raise their family here, and on any given market day, you will find family and friends alongside of them in support of this love local community endeavor. And whereas since fall of twenty fifteen, a makers movement was forming. The Shimkos began planning and meeting with local businesses and authorities to bring an open air makers market to North Canton parking lots and green spaces that were otherwise sitting vacant on the weekends. And whereas on May seventh, twenty sixteen, the Shimkos opened the friendly doors of the seven twenty market to celebrate the love of local in a truly community-driven way. Soon, the seven twenty market was attracting vendors and guests from out of the area, and it continues to attract and retain excellent vendors from Cleveland, Columbus, Dayton, and Youngstown, Ohio, to name a few, as well as the western Pennsylvania and eastern Michigan. And whereas vendors, various vendors from the seven twenty market have grown their businesses to full-time wholesale and regional sales. Many have since opened their own brick-and-mortar location in North Canton. And whereas by twenty seventeen, local venues were taking notice of the strong community building surrounding the seven twenty market and began to invite them to their cities, towns, and villages. Well, nearby established, nearby established events also reached out, inviting the Shimkos to partner now and create something new with which has transformed into the Bar B Q Market as part of the North Canton Main Street Festival and the seven twenty market, T- T- Plats.
Market.
Market Plats, there you go. And the New Berlin Festival and others throughout the surrounding communities. And whereas the seven twenty market partners with nonprofit organizations in response to a challenge to reduce waste seven twenty events, support our local scouts programs, and extend several outreach opportunities. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Wilder, Mayor of the City of North Canton, on behalf of the City of North Canton, I hereby proclaim this twelfth day of May, two thousand twenty five, as a day of celebration in recognition of the Shimko family and the seven twenty markets more than ten years of success and commitment to the North Canton community proclaimed this twelfth day of May, two thousand twenty five, when I were the mayor. So congratulations, you too. Here's a tidbit of information for you that we've garnered. You know, the economic impact of seven twenty markets is again continually strong and ever-growing. The average attendance is five to six thousand people per seven twenty market. And reporting indicates, they're good record keepers too, by the way. Reporting indicates thirty-five percent of the attendees are visiting from outside of Stark County, accounting for day trip spending inside our community. Think about this. This translates to over one point nine million visitor dollars spent per year based on the day trip calculations from visit camp. So with that information, once again, thank you for being a part of our community. Thank you for all you do to make our community even better than it is. Thank you very much.
Give him final remarks.
David didn't say a word, so.
Well, I'll just invite everybody to come this week because May seventeenth is the launch of our tenth season, and we'll be St. Paul's Lot in downtown North Canton.
Well, thank you. Thank you for taking the time under again, but I know you're off to another appointment for someone else to try to make sure that you get here.
Thank you.
One more.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
All right, you see that? Hey, we'll see you this weekend.
Yeah, thanks for the invitation.
You're welcome. Safe travels. Thank you, President Stroy, and thank you, everyone, for your patience. You're not done.
Wait, you're not done. Give me another one.
So at this time, Mayor Wilder is invited to the floor. Yeah, yeah. He presents a proclamation in honor of motorcycle safety awareness.
Yes, I just wanted to bring to the council's attention that each year I'm contacted by the American bikers aim travels education. It's called a B. And as well, the season is changing. Motorcycle riding is popular and is an efficient form of transportation and recreation in Ohio. And they want to bring attention to our community again, the safety hazards created by motorists who fail to watch for motorcyclists on our streets and highways here in North Canton. And that's a prime concern of our motorcyclists. So as the proclamation would read, and it'll be on our Facebook and our social media. But it's important for our community to recognize and need awareness for all, for on the part of all drivers, especially with regarding the sharing the road with motorcycles and to honor the many contributions motorcyclists to the communities in which they live in a pride. So therefore, May being Motorcycle Awareness Month, I, Stephen B. Wilder, for the City of North Canton, do hereby recognize, this goes back a little bit because we weren't in session, May second, two thousand twenty five, as Motorcycle Awareness Month in the City of North Canton. And I ask all and all drivers, look twice for motorcycles on our roadways, and that was proclaimed the third day of May. And I want to thank you for your patience when bringing this to our attention. This will be on our website and social media platforms, and we did send a copy of this to the organization of American bikers aimed towards education. So thank you for your patience.
Thank you. So no one signed up for the first portion of public seats, so we move on to the business. Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance thirteen, twenty twenty five?
An ordinance authorizing the vacation of a portion of Park Avenue Northeast from the south right-of-way of Power Street Northeast and an adjoining portion of Whitworth Street Northeast to the west right-of-way of Taft Avenue Northeast within the corporate limits of the City of North Canton.
Street map?
All right, this is the third reading, and we've had no changes that I've known of. Liam, has there been no changes?
Nope, nothing different.
Nothing different. So I do want to go for a second. I need a second to not the third reading.
Okay.
Favor?
Aye.
Close. Russian face. Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance nineteen, twenty twenty five?
An ordinance amending the zoning map of the City of North Canton to reclassify one parcel in the City of North Canton in accordance with the amendment procedure set forth in chapter eleven eighty-two of the Planning and Zoning Code from its existing classification to park and institutional.
Okay, this is the third reading of this. There's nothing new here because you can see the property on the map there. Any comments, questions? I'll make a motion to approve ordinance nineteen, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance twenty seven, twenty twenty five?
An ordinance approving the continued operation of a designated outdoor refreshment area in the City of North Canton pursuant to section forty-three oh one point eight-two of the Ohio Revised Code and chapter seven oh five point zero six of the qualified ordinances of the City of North Canton.
This is the renewal of Dora. I believe this is for five years.
Yes.
So nothing new here. I'm going to make a motion to adopt third reading of ordinance twenty seven, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay. Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance twenty eight, twenty twenty five?
An ordinance authorizing the vacation of a portion of Ashland Street Southwest within the corporate limits of the City of North Canton.
All right, again, this is the third reading. We have no changes. The motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance thirty, twenty twenty five?
An ordinance repealing ordinance twelve dash twenty twenty one and chapter one forty-eight Property Maintenance Review Board of the qualified ordinances of the City of North Canton in their entirety and amending various sections of part seventeen Property Maintenance Code of the qualified ordinances of the City of North Canton for the purposes of dissolving the Property Maintenance Review Board.
So this is the second reading of this one, just because of a lack of activity of that board. We just, or it was decided that it would be good to do that differently, and one of the things I liked the most that Liam shared about this was that they talked to the members of that board who weren't getting to do anything anyway, and are trying to find maybe other opportunities for them to serve in a way that they will actually get to do something. So I think it's good. It's good to do this, but it's also good that we've reached out to those folks, so. I will make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance thirty, twenty twenty five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance thirty-three, twenty twenty five?
An ordinance authorizing the vacation of a portion of Stone Hill Street Southwest within the corporate limits of the City of North Canton.
There, this is the second reading. It's up on the screen. I'm going to motion to second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Liam, if you'd read the preamble for these. Portion of those speaks?
At this time, members of the public who have signed up to address City Council will be called to do so. Each speaker will be given five minutes. Speakers shall be called in the order they signed up. During this section, comments shall be limited to items reasonably under the city's authority. The rules for speaking and the speaker's time will appear on the screens. After you have finished speaking, please remain at the podium to answer questions from the officials of the day. This will serve as a final warning for all speakers, and a violation of the rules will result in an objection from the premises.
Okay, we have two speakers signed up for this evening, and first is Pat Patterson.
Hey, everybody. Pat Patterson, seventeen fifty-four Street, Cog Falls, still the same. Um, couple of things. Number one, just briefly, like to thank the mayor and Ben and the group for coming by Friday. It's shone. After being open for six months, we finally had a brand of. So it's really exciting. We're there six days a week. If you need anything, you know where to find us. It's five hundred hours. Um, big thing I wanted to talk about today is what happened in the lobby. I want to thank all the voters who came out, supported the lobby. It's really the best, was the best option, I believe. And my hope, my prayer is that those who voted against it, give it a chance. It's not something that's going to kick in right away. I mean, the elections aren't going to begin until next year. But there will be definite changes. I went to both of the fire stations among a couple of other places on the land state, and you could see the excitement and whatnot in the faces of the firefighters that I talked to that have passed. Really good thing again, thank you for everybody that voted for it. Thanks for everybody that rallied for it, and I stand to be grilled.
All good. Any comments, questions? For the record, would you state the name of the shop that had it?
That would be, that would be comrades for those who didn't hear at home.
And what kind of items?
We do automotive repairs.
Okay.
Automotive repairs, tires. We do just about anything, shorter leg bodywork, glass, things like that. We've dropped a couple of engines in already. We've done a couple of transmissions. We do minor repairs also, so really pretty much mechanically runs the game.
Cool.
Cool.
Yeah, it's, the most exciting part for me, when I found out that the shop was going to open because they originally purchased that to be what was going to be a Blue Falls car wash. And once Captain Clean or whatever over by Meyer opened and Darren opened, the other one, what that Soak City at the bottom of the hill, not to mention the one that sheets. Well, the north end was a little flooded with car washes, so they decided, well, we'll put a shop in there, I think. And yeah, so far, so good. But I first caught wind of it. I said, you are going to pull me in North Canton, right? I said, I really want to go home, so they obliged me. And so, yeah, it's good to work for the community, or in the community, for the community. Yes, I will be one of the taxpayers, paying a little bit more in the income tax. But yet again, you know, just to summarize, price is what you pay, value is what you get. And I believe it's going to be a really good value.
Thank you.
Makes for the opportunity. Next up, we have Bill Knapp.
Bill Knapp, five one-nine, Backville Street, Southeast. I'm the, I was a treasurer before, if before. And I just want to say thanks to the council, to the administration, to the people who voted for this because there was a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff that went on that the general public really didn't know. We had a lot of meetings, discussed a lot of stuff, and a lot of brainstorming, and and we were truthful with each other, we were transparent with each other, and I think the public got to see, especially when it ended, his part, his tours and his administration, you know, the speaks that he had, kind of opened the eyes for a lot of people to see what we really have here, that we really need at the fire station. I was a firefighter myself for thirty years on North Canton, and the things that we had to go through, we tried to get a fire station years and years and years ago, and this never, never happened. And this, this was a great blessing that this happened, especially for our guys and women. The present fire station is over fifty years old, and when we built, when that station was built, that's when I got on the fire department. And at that time, the fire trucks were a lot smaller and everything. We could literally run inside a fire station. Chief, we had a time, he was an exercise guy, we used to run inside the fire station, somebody laughs for a mile. Well, the fire trucks got bigger and bigger. We couldn't do that anymore. And when I was up there during the other issues we had, I was kind of shocked to see everything that they had in that fire station. They had five pounds of stuff in a two-pound bag, and, you know, the things that I saw that we used to have, my office, I was assistant chief there, my office was now turned into a bedroom, to a bunk room. So, I mean, you have to do what you got to do. But the men and women of the fire department and all the police, they're all dedicated to the city. And I think it's really great that these guys came out later on in the campaign to push this issue. And it was a win-win situation for everybody. You know, a lot of us, when they said our taxes are going to go down, probably, man, that's parked up a lot of years. And so, you know, dropping the levies that you guys are going to drop is great, you know, we're going to use the monies, we're going to use them. And I think the city did an outstanding job, and people there, but I just want to say thank you and congratulations for everything that you did to get this approved and get it across the, cross the line for once, and we got it across. And just thank you. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on, we're going to do council reports, mix it up a little bit. We do council reports. And Jamie, start with me.
Mix things up and do council reports first. Well, I'm going to, there we go. I'm going to tag on to what my friend Bill said here. Thank you to the citizens of North Canton for your support of issue four. I'm even going to thank the folks who didn't vote for it. I think the ability to vote, whether you're for or against something, is a great privilege we have in this country, and I'm just happy that we got out. We need to get the voter turnout to be a little bit higher, but thank you for those who have went out and voted, especially those who supported it. So did have a couple of things that I wanted to share along the lines of issue four. So I guess first and foremost, Ben and I had a conversation already, I think it was, what, Wednesday morning, was it? We talked about, we made some promises. We said that we were going to release some levies, and so I would like us to not forget that that was a commitment that we made. And Ben, we kind of discussed some timeline. I guess I don't want to put words in your mouth, so correct me if I'm wrong. I think the thing that we would look to do is, once the vote is.
Wait till my report, then you'll get a timeline.
We will wait till, we will get a timeline, so, okay. I just want to, you know, let the public know that that is something that we are very much committed to doing. So the other thing I wanted to touch on was, is, you know, I know that there was a faction of people who have questioned the finances of the city, and I'm just going to say it, maybe some of the leadership that has, hopefully in the past, but not necessarily now, come from this room. And I think a big step was made when my colleague Dave, and I think all of us agreed that we were not going to pass a budget that was not balanced. So I want to remind the public that we have balanced the budget. But the other thing that I want to just touch on, and Liam, if you might be able to show us, so folks, I did catch a couple of comments during this whole process of people wanting to know where the dollars are spent. Liam, could you just kind of show us where folks can go on the city website and find our checkbook? So anybody at home can go and they can see where their, not our, their tax dollars are being spent.
Yeah, absolutely. So on the city's website, under Government, you navigate to, under Departments, to Finance. And over here on the left-hand side, we have both the Financial Transparency Portal and the Ohio Checkbook. Gina, is there a particular place that you would point people?
Well, the checkbook is the state, that's the state's website, so it is only annually. So that would have everything through December thirty-first of twenty-four and each year prior to that. Yeah, there you go. And then it has filters similar to the transparency portal that we have, which is the current year budget. So this is kind of the past, and then, yep. So this one then will take you to the current. It will have the, it integrates every night with our financial software, so if we run a check run, it's in here. I mean, and that happens every week. We do check runs every week on Thursdays, so by Friday, you'll be able to see everything that's up to date. When council passes a supplemental appropriations, it's updated the following night. So every night, this should be as, as real time as we can get it.
Cool.
And same sort of thing, I'm sorry. Liam, can you, there are filters. See where there's the stories, those are reports, there's reports, there's stories. You want more detail or more information? Oh, I'm getting official now. Do we have time for this? I might get off the road. My favorite topic. I just, I'm saying, click around. You can't break this. It's all read-only. You can, if you see all those little pretty graphs, but then below there, if you scroll down, is all the detail. Or if you just click on one item in the graph, it'll drill down into that one. Just play with it. And if you get frustrated, get out and get back in, it resets. So, you know, you can't break it, and so I just encourage you to walk around it and learn it. And then on the left, Liam, on the left, on the down, on the side, you see where it says filter and views? We have those set up too. If you just want to see the general fund, if you just want to see the fire fund, if you just want to see the street fund, you can get all that other stuff out of there by just clicking on the view, so. Or call us, we'll help you. We love to play around in there.
Perfect. Well, thank you, Gina, thank you, Liam, for sharing that. You know, the reason that I wanted to bring that up is, is that, you know, first and foremost, we in this room, we hear the community, we work for the community. So I just wanted you to know that, but also to highlight the fact that we have some very helpful folks here. So again, thank you to those who, not even just support, but who voted this past election. So last thing, shifting gears, just want to again thank the administration for some things that they've been following up. I feel like I've been following you every couple of days with something, so. I drove by the alley off of West Park. Looks absolutely fantastic. The cones were up, although I was tempted to drive on to say I was the first car. But no, thank you guys very much for helping those folks out, and for Ben for chasing down something for me this morning, so. With that, go to the seven twenty market this weekend. I am looking very much forward to that, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie? Something mentioned on the twenty twenty five, through Saturday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty five, is National Police Week. As we recognize the National Police Week, I want to express deep appreciation of the dedicated men and women of our police department. Their commitment to protecting our community and upholding public safety is a service we value. On behalf of City Council, I extend our sincere gratitude to our officers and their families for all that they did. Thank you. Thank you. Melissa?
So I get to scoop the mayor a little bit. I'm sure he can talk about it, but thank you to Walsh University for recognizing the city at commencement, and our mayor did an awesome job speaking on behalf of the city when he was, accepted that award on our behalf. So just wanted to recognize him for that. I'm sure he'll tell you more. My son graduated, so I got to be there with the city, but then also watching my son from the front row, which is pretty nice. I appreciate that. And also want to thank the voters for supporting the issue. It is awesome. After all the work that went into it, being successful, and just thank you to administration, Ben, Catherine, everyone, for all of the hours of roadshow and talking to everyone, and I think that did make a big difference. And the point that Jamie, you know, made was that. And the, the, the point that Jamie, you know, made was that we really want to deliver what people want and need and, you know, care about the concerns and questions. And I think all the iterating is how we finally got there. So, definitely want to echo that, thank you.
All right, thank you to the voters, thank you to the administration, and thanks to council. We worked, that was total teamwork from both ends. And you can't be a role working for the same goal and stuff. We heard a lot from our, our voters out there, we were able to answer them, you know, the meetings that Ben had or coffee with council or lunch with council or what have you. We got to hear what they wanted to hear and we brought them and informed them. And it's like, I'm former assistant chief, it's a win-win for everyone. And again, thank you. Other than that, no report? Thank you. Stephanie?
Just to echo what everybody has said eloquently, it was, it was a win-win, it was a team effort. Holly and Bill are here and Matt and the community helped as well. But we also, we really had people and, and you know, from the auditor's office, kind of helping and saying, hey, if you guys are more transparent in this way and people can push this button and if you change your website like this, it might help. So, it was this, this very community, kind of from all over, of people really wanting it to succeed. I know that night, I received emails from people in Jackson, from people in Canton, from, in, in North Canton. But that's what's so neat, is I think people saw the hard work we had put in many years. And, and it was, it was the way, I think, that we said at this time, too, that was just so uncomplicated in beginning with the communication and then kind of getting the community. Thank you and thanks to the community for getting out and, and voting. And truly, the administration took this, because we weren't sure back in November. We all had a lot of questions in January, and are we going forward with this or not? And I remember sitting here like, oh my gosh, are we gonna do this? And so, for you guys to get behind it and, and move it forward was huge, so thank you.
Thank you, Christina.
All right, I have so many things, I'm sorry. So, just congratulations to Lynn and Dave Shimko. I think the seven-twenty market has just been such an incredible addition to our community. And even though they take it to other communities, it still has our zip code in it. And I just, we should all be really proud of that. I just wanted to give a special thanks to Bill Nep. We started working on this, what, ten years ago, it was our first committee trying to get a fire station? And just the way that you've stuck with it and advocated for it, and you would show up to meetings and have your binder of all the historical data, like, this was a passion project for you. And a lot of people retire and don't still care, and you cared about this community. So, thank you for that. And then also, you know, just to everyone who gave us a platform to advocate or at least inform about issue four, there, the chamber invited us in. There are a couple of individuals in the community who are just working really hard to kind of create civic education in. And that's, I, I mean, we were invited to a couple of places that citizens came out, like, almost en masse to, for that kind of, an event. It was a really strong attendance. And so, we had the opportunity to talk to people and ask great questions. And it just, I'm really grateful to the people who did that. What else? I just want to touch briefly on the parks master plan. The RFP for that will be going out maybe tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. And so, just as a reminder on that, that will basically assess all of our current parks, look at land that's empty, that we may own or not own. And the really cool thing is that they'll gather a lot of community input. And that will kind of give us a pathway forward and let us know what kind of support we have for things. So, really, really excited for that. We've never had a comprehensive plan for parks, I don't think. So, this will be a really great framework so we can move things forward, and that's all. Thank you all. Oh, thanks administration also for everything you guys did.
Thank you. I want to thank Steve Pope for the prayer. Want to thank Dave and Lynn Shimko. It is amazing, I'm glad you did the proclamation there, because it's amazing to see what they've turned into over the last ten years. It's just incredible, so. Looking forward to stopping over there this Saturday. You mentioned the motorcycle awareness. I'd say be careful of, you know, when, when people are blowing the grass out onto the streets, that's a big thing about motorcycle awareness. So, if people could keep an eye on that. But most of all, I want to say thank you. So, issue four to be was an investment in our community and the future. So, I can't thank the, the citizens enough and all of council, administration, all the people that got behind it. And it really was just teamwork down to, to the very, I mean, Bill, you've been working on this for, what, twenty-four years? Thank you years. I mean, it's incredible. It, it's, that's such a huge win, and I'm so proud of, of our community for getting behind that and, and seeing that there was a need for that. Yeah, just, it, it's, what an honor. So, just want to say thank you. And let's go to department reports, and we'll go with the mayor.
Okay. There's a lot of thank yous going out this evening. And I'll throw myself into that. Again, thank you to the team who helped educate our community on issue four. And it was a team. And education, I think, was the better move this, this time than listening to our constituents from before. And I felt they made an educational choice to, for the betterment of our community and enhancing our community services. To our speakers, thank you for being here. To our scouts, again, thank you for being here. And for our property maintenance review board, as we go through from the second motion tonight, I do want to thank, as we move forward to a, a point of efficiency and a little bit more effectiveness, I want to thank these five people who answered my invitation to be serving on the property maintenance review board, Dennis Coy, Holly Pierpont, Greg Sarbock, Brad Davis, and Kim Vandergriff. I want to thank you five for your willingness to step forward and say, yes, I'd like to be a part of something that, you know, could help our community. And after time evaluation, we're going to merge that. And don't be afraid that I, or don't be surprised if I don't call you for something else in the future. So, thank you very much for, for being a part of that. Ms. Owens, Ms. Owens talked about the Walsh University commencement, which was on May third, if I recall. And the city of North Canton did receive the distinguished service medal presented by President Tim Collins. And the board, and that goes back to when they first started the university. It was an alfalfa field about sixty years ago, and then sixty-two years, they, they had their first buildings up and, and it was onward and upward. But I was very honored and humbled to accept this distinguished service medal on behalf of the city of North Canton, city council, and administration. In twenty nineteen, I was fortunate enough to be elected as mayor. And that was the same year that Dr. Tim Collins was appointed president of Walsh University. And one of my first meetings was to reach out to him. And together, we chartered a course of collaboration, communication, and cooperation to how we can incorporate, or better, both of us, the city with our hometown university. And, and I think the last six years has been a wonderful journey for us. And I appreciate the administrations that came before us and President Gisom, when he was there for over ten years, and trying to work together to benefit our community. And I can't thank Walsh University enough for this distinct honor for our city to receive the distinguished service medal. I just want to have a couple housekeeping things I'd like to share coming up. We have a couple really neat events in our city, Main Street Festival and also the Chocolate Room. And Six Mix is willing to host an open house that's right there on Main Street at the five oh six South Main. And they are willing to have an open house from two to seven on Wednesday, May fourteenth, for anyone interested to be a vendor at the Main Street Festival or for the Chocolate Room. Just an informational setting, you can stop in, talk with them a little bit and receive some information for them. So, I wanted to give them a plug, that if anybody's looking, we have two wonderful events coming up. Something dear to our hearts is our North Canton Garden Club. They have their twenty-twenty-five perennial plant sale. And that's going to be Friday, May sixteenth, and Saturday, May seventeenth. That's gonna be from nine to two. And now they have it at one of a location, five twenty Heatherwood Street Southwest. So, I wanted to give a shout-out for our North Canton Garden Club. Some of you may not realize, but they do all the planters in the city for us, around City Hall and at the square. And those ladies do a wonderful job. So, if you're looking for plants this weekend, please stop by and see our North Canton Garden Club. And as it was mentioned, as Lynn said, May seventeenth also is our seven-twenty market from ten to three. And I have an opportunity, I'll, I'll be splitting my duties that day. Also on Saturday, from one to three, there is a one-hundred-and-fourth birthday party for a World War II veteran, Denver Moore. And I have an opportunity to be in the caravan, and we're gonna start from the Giant Eagle over in Canal Fulton, right there on Locust Street. And it'll progress to the Sam Center on Manchester Road. And it is in recognition of Denver being a World War II veteran. And that's gonna be from one to three. So, I'll hustle back for the, the Main Street Fest, or the seven-twenty market too. And as we look towards Memorial Day, the North Canton Lions Club will be organizing it one more time. And along Strong History, and that's gonna be May twenty-sixth from eight to ten. We have a parade on Main Street, and then we'll culminate at Bitzer Park, weather permitting, for a Memorial Day presentation and ceremony. So, if you're looking for contacts there, joecheverro@gtechgroup.com can be contacted. Or if you want to just contact Danielle Swinehart here, our administrative assistant, she'll have information also on the Memorial Day Parade. And put it on your calendar, Saturday, June seventh, is the Mayor's Fishing Rodeo, right here at Bryce Park. And be there or be square, as I say, it's for ages two to twelve. And it's for our families residing in the North Canton City School District and/or who are members of the North Canton Eagles, ARI two-two-two-three. And that's always, we always have about ninety to one hundred and twelve, one hundred and fifteen young people there. And it's a great day, it's a lot of good fishing. As I'm getting close, near the end here, again, Mr. Mathiti, thank you again, Councilmember Mathiti, for recognizing National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial Week. And May fifteenth, I'll be over at the Stark County Sheriff's Office at eleven AM for a peace officer's memorial ceremony. And that is always a, a very humbling day. And coming from my background, I can't thank our employees, the men and women of our, who serve it on our North Canton Police Department, you know, for their unwavering dedication and loyalty and willingness to answer the call to serve our community and provide, be safe community for us. And I always wish them, for them to stay safe and for them to keep well. I can't thank our safety forces enough for what they do for our community. And on that special day, if you want to come out to the Sheriff's Office and be a part of that ceremony or witness it, you're more than welcome. And last but not least, for those, many of us that are, have relations with the, our armed forces, I just want to recap a couple of things, that May seems to be a very busy month for our military services. Since we didn't meet the one meeting there, Silver Star Banner Day was celebrated on May first. That day honors the sacrifices of US personnel as well as those awarded the Silver Star. On a personal note, my father served in World War II, was a recipient of the world, of the Silver Star. On April nineteenth, he was in the liberation of a town in Germany, where he was wounded and awarded Silver Star for his heroic actions on that day. And when I read his citation, it really gives chills to me as to what he encountered in less than thirty minutes of liberating the community and how he took care of his, his personnel. Victory in Europe Day was Tuesday, May eighth, nineteen forty-five, and it marked the official surrender of all German military operations. And as we move on, there's a lot of support for families. There's Military Spouse Appreciation Day, and, and that went along just before Mother's Day. And going into my final proclamation, this is the beginning of Armed Forces Week. It's the third, it starts, it's celebrated annually on the third Saturday in May. And it highlights Armed Forces Week, which starts on the second Saturday in May and ends on, on the Armed Forces Day. It's not a national holiday, but it is recognized as a very special day. And sometimes there's, there, I came across this wonderful organization. And I think this will bring me to the conclusion of my comments, please. I want to share a proclamation, and it's from the, it's geared toward the Children of Fallen Patriots Day. And I'm just gonna stand and read it.
Children of Fallen, what, Mayor, I'm having trouble here.
Yep, Children of Fallen Patriots Day. So, this will go out on our website for May thirteenth. Throughout the history of the United States, the brave men and women of the United States Armed Forces work together to protect our country and defend the principles of unparalleled liberty, citizens of our nation and joy. And whereas the sacrifices of the military made not only by the service members in the defense of freedom, but shared by their families. And military families often experience the strain and anxiety in sending a loved one off to military actions in defense of our country and not knowing if they will return home, and some never do. And whereas especially for the children of these men and women in uniform who have made the ultimate sacrifice in protecting our freedoms in defense of our nation will forever mourn the loss of their loved one. And whereas the Children of Fallen Patriots Foundation provides a special opportunity to remember the sacrifice of our fallen patriots and recognize the children who have been left behind by investing in their futures through scholarships and educational counseling. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Wilder, Mayor of the city of North Canton, Ohio, do hereby proclaim May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five, as Children of Fallen Patriots Day. Throughout the city, encourage all North Cantonians to remember and care for the children of our military families who have lost a parent or guardian in the line of duty for their sacrifice in the name of freedom. Proclaim this twelfth day of May, two thousand twenty-five by the way of the mayor, Stephen B. Wilder. With that, I conclude my comments. I appreciate your, your, your privilege to speak before you tonight and your endurance with my comments, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Catherine?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. President. I will say, on issue four, good job, guys. I mean, the tenacity, the perseverance, the resiliency, it was an ebb and flow, right? It seemed like there were times we had motivation and then, you know, kept getting setbacks. But what I loved to see was like, you know, when it got to the end, it was just like, I think everyone felt sports reverence, we left it all on the court, like, you really did. It's like one of those where like, you would not have, however it went, you would not have regretted what you did. And, you know, I'm like a silent watcher online, and I was just reading how many people, like Holly, I, I told you when I saw you at the Hellenberg, when you were, you know, setting people straight online, you know, where people just had such misinformation. And I think some people just like to put misinformation out and see where it goes. And I just really appreciate you kept giving correct information, as were others. Bill, I saw you do that too. You know, I read these comments, I'm like, thank you, because, you know, we can't do that, but you could. You know, I read these comments, I'm like, thank you, because, you know, we can't do that, but you could, and you're the community, and you were sending the community, um, straight on the right information. And, you know, especially when the crazy texts were coming through and everybody was just, what's going on? I found you weren't focusing on the problem, you were focusing on the solution. You were like, let's just, we're not letting this knock us off course, we're staying the course. So kudos, got it done. Um, so also, um, the next thing, you know, as soon as that, you know, it was crazy night, right? We were talking about the cows were playing, we're watching results, and then my household, like we did, one was screaming, we won, and the other one's like, win. And it was just insane, but, um, soon as it ended, like the next day, people were calling, okay, when's the fire station being built? When are we tearing down the old houses? What's going in the old station? What's going, so, you know, Ben's going to be talking about that. So, you, the great presenter he is and putting things together very visually for everyone to see, we have that tonight. And, um, Christina mentioned the Park Master Plan, it's actually called the Pros Plan, it's Parks, Recreation and Open Spaces, the acronym. So that's what it is, a comprehensive strategic look, like we said, we've never had this before, we've never looked strategically, been very operational, we've done a great job with the parks, we've had maintaining, cutting the grass, keeping it clean, but really looking at everything, you know, and, um, assessing whether or not, you know, uh, what we have is, you know, um, you know, all that we have, or is there more to have? How much would it cost to have? What, what are, what are we not utilizing in some of the open spaces we have that we could? But what would the costs be to this? We don't have a recreation department. Lot of cities have rec programming, which is a revenue set, uh, generating source for your parks departments that helps offset the costs of parks. But there's a cost to have an rec department. So it's just going to be all of that analysis, um, definitely combined with, um, community input. So having community meetings throughout the summer, probably at here or Dogwood. Um, but once we, uh, put the RFP out tomorrow, and then we get people to bid on it, we will have a steering committee that will select like we do with so many other RFPs, and will choose who will, who will do that, who's going to be the, um, vendor we choose to do the, the Park Master Plan. And they will look at similar cities of our size and, um, what they have and, and how they're organized, how their parks, their apartments are organized. Um, and then I want to say to, you know, the seven twenty market, Lynn and Dave, you know, that we've, we've all seen it grow up from ten years ago, when it first started with Lynn's little idea, and, um, she and Dave have supported so many small businesses and given them their start. They're really shop local and champions of that, so it's so great to have them. Our farmer's market is here on Wednesdays, if anybody heard, John, you were there, Christina, Jamie, they, I got all the reports, I was the first one. What'd you think? Pretty good for a first one. It'll continue to grow, it's got to find its following. Um, some people are still thinking it was canceled, you know, because there, you know, a lot of misinformation also went out that we weren't having it, but I think as they start seeing we are having it, they'll start to talk, and maybe more vendors will keep adding on as it grows. So Wednesday, four to seven now, so it's a little bit later, it used to be three to six, so it's giving people time to get home from work and get here. Um, so I think, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben.
Thank you, uh, may I go last?
Yes, yes, I'm going to try really hard not to say what you're going to say, because I know we overlap on a lot of our work.
If you say it, I get to cross it off my list.
Okay, I'm going to leave it to you then, because here's, can I?
Yes.
I have just a couple of short things, so I, yeah, in finance, we are sleeping better knowing that our safety services, fire EMS are funded with income tax, which is a just much more stable revenue source for, for them. So we're very happy about that. We were on the phone Wednesday with our municipal advisor, actually, um, it was Tuesday night, but I felt like it was really late, and I said we probably should continue tomorrow morning, so we let him go. So municipal advisor will help us through the debt process, um, issuing the bonds. Um, we connected with our legal bond legal counsel, um, last week, last week. Um, so we're wrapping up all of us together and forming these timelines, and so we're all getting very excited about the project, obviously, but, um, the new funding sources will, will have, um, a pretty good presentation for the budget for next year, so we're already starting to gear towards that. So in finance, we're very happy about the results as well, of course. Um, and so the other thing I wanted to touch on was our auditors will start tomorrow. So again, we're trying to balance three years of, of finances, so now we're getting audited on last year. We're already thinking about preparing next year's budget, but we're still in the current year. So we're trying to manage all three of those things. We asked the auditors to come in about a month early this year, um, just to get things wrapped up, because we always feel like we're last, and then I want them to have time to do a thorough job and, you know, on their schedule. So they're starting tomorrow, they'll be in for two straight days, and then if they need to come back or request more information, of course, we would allow that and be welcome that, so I'll keep you updated as we hear from them through the process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Fun. Do you want, uh, Liam to go before you?
I think he's going to cross something else off my list.
Anyway, okay.
So first things first, I want to welcome our summer interns. Uh, so we have Sabrina Estevez, uh, she is a Ohio State student, uh, Anna Hoover grad. Uh, so she started today, uh, so she'll be working with me as well as the administration. Uh, when I introduced her to Gina, Gina said, uh, if she's available for stuff, I'll have things for her. So she should get a pretty well-rounded approach. Uh, we'll also have Abby DeLong, another Ohio State student, uh, and she'll be doing a lot of the same stuff. So we will have people available Monday through Friday assisting with various things and learning how we do business here. Uh, and then on the other side, I have the community survey. Uh, so every odd numbered year, we do the community survey. Uh, so if you navigate on the city's website, uh, it opened today, and it'll be, be open through August fifteenth, uh, which coincides with Main Street Festival. Uh, we'll be at all of the main festivals, I'll be there this weekend at seven twenty, uh, to take people's surveys. Uh, and also we'll go out with the North Canton Sun, that'll be in the summer edition. Us people will get a paper copy that they can mail back to us, but if you are inclined to do it on the website, which I would encourage, uh, I will show you how to navigate to it. So under community, under community information, you'll go to community survey. And this will take you right to the portal to fill out your response. Uh, we ask that every adult in the household fills it out. Uh, you don't even have to live in the city. Uh, there's a question to mark if you live outside the city, uh, your age, and then just your opinions on various parts of the city, uh, department functions, uh, your thoughts on Main Street and improvements that we can make, as well as, you know, the strengths and weaknesses of the city. Uh, so we encourage everybody to fill it out. I'm hoping to break the record, uh, our record's somewhere in the twelve hundreds, and I want to try to overachieve that this year. Our last from twenty-three was eight hundred and forty-one. Uh, so at the very least, I want to be twenty-three. Uh, so I'll be out, I'll be active, if anybody has any questions, I'll be available.
Thank you, Liam, I'm going to throw out there, I'm trying to remember what year it was, my first official involvement with the city was on the Citizen Survey Committee, so it's nice to see that we are continuing to keep this, uh, great tool going.
Another date, if you want me to date you.
What was the date?
Two thousand nine.
Two thousand nine, I was going to say two thousand eleven, yes, two thousand nine, that sounds about right. Thank you.
All right, you, you ready to go now?
I'm ready. Hi, I have a list, but I will try to go quickly. Um, so first, um, while I was away, sorry, uh, but back now, um, NOPAC had several public, uh, meetings for the community to come out, learn about our new aggregate. Um, there is still time to change the option you've picked in the aggregate, and so I just wanted to remind the community again tonight that there are longer-term options available. Just visit NOPAC.org or call NOPAC, and they will be more than happy to enroll you in a twelve-month plan or a twenty-four-month plan, if you want that instead of the six-month plan. Um, the call center is in the United States, it's actually in Minnesota, so don't worry about foreign calls. Um, this building that we're sitting in right now, Civic Center, is going to start to get some improvements over the course of the summer, and the biggest ones are going to happen, uh, while we're on break. But so in this most recent year's budget, you all approved some monies to make some ADA improvements to this facility, so we're going to get some new ramps, some new push buttons, um, some better ADA parking in the parking lot, and along with that, some repairs to the storm drainage in the parking lot and repaving the entire parking lot, so. This building will get a little bit of a facelift over the course of the summer. Um, it is spring, and that means that trees are growing and bushes are growing, and more importantly, grass is growing. Um, and it's that time of year where code enforcement starts to get a lot of calls, and I just want to kindly ask everybody in the community to remember to be patient with code enforcement, and that by law, everybody gets a correction period. So particularly for grass, if you call today, we would give your neighbor the letter, your neighbor then gets two days to fix it, and then two days after that, we mow the grass. So from the day you report it, four days later is the longest time it's going to go before the grass gets cut. But it's not necessarily going to be the very next day or within eight hours. So please try to have some patience and remember that everybody gets an opportunity to fix their mistakes before they get fined, regardless of what property they own.
What, what would we be charging them to mow their grass?
Depends on the size of your lot, um, typically somewhere around thirty dollars if we do it.
Can I throw something else in there since you're talking about grass?
Yeah.
Yes. I was not going to say that. I was just going to throw out there, when you're mowing your lawn, please, 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 it goes back to what you said about motorcycles, don't blow it in the street. Not only is it unsafe for people on motorcycles, but, um, I got, I don't even want to say more concerningly, but, you know, just as bad, it's, it's bad for our, our storm sewer system. So the grass can end up in the, uh, in the pipes, cause clogs, so please, 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 don't blow it in the sidewalk, and blow it off your, off the sidewalk too. So don't blow it in the street, don't blow it on the sidewalk. There you go.
Stark's lawn, I recommend just mulching your grass with the lawnmower, because then it fertilizes. I have been asked to share that at this year's Main Street Festival, we will be having the first ever North Canton Idol. Main Street Idol, sorry, singing competition. Um, auditions are May twenty-eighth from six to eight PM. You do need to sign up ahead of time for the audition.
Yeah, we can also email your video if you can't make it.
Or you can email a video if you can't, there are some flyers in the law, or on the Chambers website. Um, our North Canton first ever Civic Leadership Academy starts next week. I mentioned it this week because we don't have reports next week, you know, shout them out next week. Um, we're very excited, I actually spent a not insignificant portion of my morning writing lesson plans for the CLA, so.
Excited.
I'm very excited. All right, now it is, uh, orange cone season, and Rob gave us a number of updates to share with you all today, but, uh, he could not be here, so you get me sharing his updates on his behalf. Um, Orion, which is just outside the city, but is a partner project, we're on our waterline. Our portion, the waterlines are done, so they're moving on to the paving, and hopefully Orion will be reopened here relatively soon. Um, another project that is technically outside city limits, but we're a partner on, um, if you weren't aware, Dressler and Everhard out by Belvin Village is getting widened and repaved this summer. Um, as part of that, our old cast iron waterline under Everhard and Dressler is being replaced, and that project is set to begin in June. So if you travel around Belvin Village, expect some lane closures or some rerouting uh, over the course of the summer, and it's all for the better. Um, here in our city, uh, the Main Street repaving is set to begin after the Fourth of July. Our contractor has been, uh, very kind in working with us to avoid school and avoid all of the festivities for the Fourth of July, from the parade and the race, and.
I'm hoping to be done before the next festival starts, with Berlin and Main Street.
Um, Woodrow, the waterlines are completely done, the trench has been filled, and they're starting the concrete work to then finish with the paving, so it is all drivable again. Um, still some intermittent closures for when they're doing things. Um, uh, West Maple will go out to bid this summer. It is a federal fiscal year twenty-six project, so that won't be until July that that begins. Um, but that will also be this summer here in North Canton. Um, and then finally down in Ward Three on East Hill, we're going to be replacing more than a thousand linear feet of curb and gutter. Some of you, it's in pretty bad shape, some of you who drove it last year may remember the tall weeds growing, and we actually had to mow it a couple times last year.
When you're mowing the street, there's a problem. So we'll get those weeds cut.
Um, so that curb and gutter is set to be replaced here relatively soon, but we did want to begin warning the community that there will be a lane closure on East Hill, eastbound, while that work is going on, and there will be a detour.
Or, good to know. Or three, get ready for the phone calls. Yes.
On our favorite red brick building across the street, we have some good news. Um, as you all know, we reached a corrective action plan with them for their code violations, just like any property owner, they are entitled to a corrective action plan. Um, and we are very happy to report that they have been making pretty substantial progress on that corrective action plan. They have paid their first installment of the fines, they have, uh, replaced most of the plywood boarding facing Main and Maple Streets. The, uh, the most notable one is a lovely new garage door, which, um, personally, I had a great time, somebody drove by and took a picture and posted on Facebook as they were installing it, and said in their Facebook post, man, I really hope it's red to match the brick. And, you know, I knew from their corrective action plan that it had to be red to match the brick. So I was like, oh, just you wait, it will be. Um, most of the debris, loose bricks, all of that has been cleared up. And then most exciting to me is that, uh, as many of you know, possibly the worst portion of the building is the elevator shaft on the west side. Um, that is out to bid for repairing the elevator shaft right now. So some real progress towards getting that building fixed up. And now on to issue four, um, I reiterate my deep thanks to the community for helping, uh, fund this need and this project, and I have to echo what Gina said of while I am very excited to fund the fire station that I have worked very hard to bring to reality. I admittedly am more relieved at having stable funding long-term for our fire department in the US. Um, but as Catherine said, immediately the next day, the questions were, when are things happening? Um, so we have worked very hard over the last week to get the best possible rough timeline we can together for all of you in the public, so Liam, if you'll put my slide up. Um, so here is our post-issue four timeline, I'm going to start on the left, which are our hard dates, by which I don't mean that I can tell you the exact calendar date it's going to happen, but I can pretty much promise you it's going to happen in that month. Um, so first, this month, May issue four passed by our voters. Uh, final site demo at the new fire station site will happen, hopefully it'll start this week. Um, that was actually, regardless of what more going to happen, we have a grant from Stark County Land Bank that is helping make that demolition possible. Um, we are hopeful that the results will be certified by the end of this month by BOE. Might be the first week of June, um, but essentially May, BOE should certify the results. And then we'll also restart our contractor selection process by the end of this month. So that brings us into June, July, so again, maybe like the first week of June, that'll be when the BOE certifies, but as soon as they've certified, we can start the process for legislation to rescind the property taxes and to sell the bonds for the fire station. And our hope right now is that both of those will be done before you leave for summer break. Um, so then you'll come back from summer break about August, September, we should have the contractor selected, finalized, ready for the seven of you to award when you come back from break. Um, and then we'll also sort of do the final steps in selling those bonds, once we have that, uh, guaranteed final price from a contractor. That sort of ends our hard dates list. We move into the soft dates list, so this is a sort of rough category of when these things are going to occur. I can't tell you the exact month yet, so fall, winter, after we've picked the contractor, we'll finish working with them and our architect to make final building plans, submit for building permits. As it's a commercial development, we'll need to go to Planning Commission for planning commission approval, all of those sorts of fun paperwork things that go into building, building. Maybe if that all moves fast enough before snow starts falling, some site work might begin, but maybe not. Then in January twenty-six, new income tax will take effect. We've already been talking to Rita, and they're going to help us. We've already been talking to Rita and they're gonna help us with a. Public mailing campaign of making sure people know that it's taking effect, trying to get to every employer in the city to let them know it's taking effect. Get to local accountants, let them know it's taking effect. And then even though we will have passed the legislation to rescind. This year, they roll off at the end of this year. So January, the property taxes go away. Which means your first property tax bill next year, you should not see the levies anymore. Hopefully then in spring twenty twenty six, construction of the new station will begin in earnest. Uh for a move-in in summer of twenty twenty seven. Once we have moved in and are no longer using stations one and two, we will put station one up for sale. And station two, our current plan is to convert it to a recreation facility, very nicely located in the middle of our. Park already. It was originally built to be a parks facility and our parks department is very excited to have that garage back. Questions about our issue four timeline? Alright, well, um remember McLeister's point earlier. Promises made has to mean promises kept. And so I can assure you that from the staff side, we will be working to make sure we bring. All of the legislation to rescind property taxes and work on this station as quickly as possible.
Thank you very much for the timeline.
Thank you.
Question. When we go to pick a contractor. Other cities, especially when it's a railing wage job. Try to use local contractors. Is there a way we can maybe limit it to local contractors because the money they earn will be spent? In the community?
Um so it has to be an open bid by our procurement process. Um and we actually started this process. Um last year with the qualifications portion, so. General contractors who wanted to bid were asked to submit their qualification statement of I am qualified to do this work. Um and so what that means is now that we have funding. Every firm who's set, who passed qualification, so everybody who qualified. Will now get the next packet which asks them for a pricing proposal. Um so we can't limit it just to local firms, but in the ordinance that you all passed, changing our bidding rules, you did. Add to the evaluation criteria a local preference um pricing, so. Basically, if you're a local company, we evaluate your price as if it's lower than it actually is, which to your point sort of helps with that. We know some tax dollars would be coming back to our community.
Cause so many times I've seen in other cities where out of state companies come in and then they leave.
I can tell you all of the firms that made it past qualification are in Ohio.
Are in Ohio.
I was gonna say note that timeline, see summer twenty twenty seven there, twenty twenty seven, all of twenty twenty seven is when the schools. Will have their, the new middle school will be in.
Right.
That's their first, so it's twenty twenty seven's exciting year of new things in North Canton.
It's very exciting.
Well, to continue with exciting, I have. One more very exciting thing. That um you all kind of touched on while I was away, but Catherine was kind enough to not spill the beans and let me do it when I return. So Liam, so go to my next slide. I am very happy tonight to uh unveil a new program for the city called Beauty on Main. Um and this will be, this is a. Program with the idea of making our downtown more beautiful. And where it really started is Catherine and I went to the Ohio City Managers Association Conference. And uh one of the keynote speakers was an urban planner from Akron. Um and he was talking to us about a lot of things about, you know, making your cities more vibrant. And one particular quote. Which is on screen really struck me. Um he was talking about what really changes your community and that. You know, we all tend to think of major streetscape projects that do the whole corridor all at once, rip it all out, put a all-new back in. And he said, no, what really changes your community? Is small projects done with great love. And as we'll talk about as I go through this, what he was really getting at is that stop thinking about spending millions and millions of dollars at once. And start thinking about incrementally changing your downtown. And so that, yeah, in year one, you planted one tree and it might seem really silly. But in ten years, now you've planted ten trees and now it looks like it was intentional and beautiful and you've added streetscape and along the way, you've only ever spent a couple thousand dollars. Uh next slide. So that brings us to um we envisioned this new initiative of beauty on main. So it's, the idea is to transform our downtown core. Through meaningful but small beautification, streetscape, public art projects and. Part of why we love this is one of the central tenants of our twenty twenty three master plan is creating a vibrant downtown core. And beautification and public art is part of vibrancy. So it's intended that this program will be primarily funded by grants and donations. So instead of relying on appropriations from all of you every year. We're gonna try and run this essentially as a fundraising program. And as I said, it's really intended for small projects only. Next slide. So how does this work? So we will fund small projects, which redefine as twenty thousand dollars or less. Own, to start, only in the main street center zoning district. So it's about from Fifth Street north to Backdoor Street south. No single project is gonna dramatically change the landscape, so. What this principle is about, this image is I put into an A I image generator a picture of our main street and told it to. Reimagine our main street with more street beautification. And so the idea of this program is to look at something like this picture as a concept and not. Try to create a single program that's gonna do all of this in one go. But think about each tree or each planter or each bench in that picture as an individual little project to get done one after the other. And so in initial funding, I'm very happy to say that we have over twenty one thousand dollars in initial funding, primarily from a NOPEC. Grant of twenty thousand dollars, which you all appropriated while I was gone. And another uh thirteen hundred dollars in private donations so far. Uh next slide please. Um. No beautification of our main street or building of our community is gonna be possible without some public input. So how can the community get involved in this program? Well. We didn't wanna be the only ones deciding what we're gonna do with all these small projects or what they should be. So we've created on our website a voting system that if you can go, if you have an idea of a little project you think could be on Main Street, make something beautiful. You can go submit it and you can vote for it and you can share it on Facebook and get your friends to vote for it and. In addition to that, you can see every other project that somebody has submitted and vote for it if you like. We've put in nine cedar projects so far. Everyone in the community is welcome to go submit more. There, Liam's showing you all on screen now of. Where it is on our, if you just go to our northcantonOhio.gov slash beauty on main and scroll to the bottom, you can look at all the currently pending. Ideas and vote on ideas you like. Um secondly, you can volunteer your time or your space. So. Um if you aren't on Main Street, some of these projects are probably gonna need volunteers, whether it's to dig a hole to plant a tree, whether it's to help us paint a mural or help us paint. A crosswalk or a new planter box and we'll put out calls for volunteers when they're available on our website. If you wanna get those directly to your email or your text messages, northcantonOhio.gov slash subscribe. And then if you are on Main Street and you own a building or you have some empty space in your front yard and. You wanna volunteer it for a mural on your wall or a street tree in your front yard. Send us an email and we'll make a note and we'll try our best to find a project that fits you. And then finally, you can donate or sponsor. So as I said, you know, we're trying to run this program solely off donations if at all possible. And then beyond that, if you're a business on Main Street. Um we'd be very happy to partner with you for a sponsored project. So maybe you want a mural on your wall, but you want the mural to have your company's logo or something about. You know, your, what your company sells. If the city's solely funding that mural, we're probably not gonna pay for a marketing ad for it. But if you wanna help sponsor that mural. We'd be happy to work with you to try and get that in to not only create some public art, but also help sell your business. Next slide. Oh, I had an individual slide, I forgot. Dang it. You can voter submit on ideas.
Is that on there?
What?
Pictures.
The pictures are in there. Oh, that's coming up. Oh, that's what I thought the next slide would. Okay, you can voter submit on ideas, next slide. You can volunteer your time or space, next slide. You can donate or sponsor at email us at admin at northcantonOhio.gov if you're interested in donating or sponsoring. Uh now, next slide. So.
That's Peter.
I have, I have found that uh. You know, as I've been trying to sell this idea to people, they want visuals of, okay, what are you talking about? What are these little things? So. Uh these are a collection of some of my favorite projects that I view they're seen on vacation, cause I drive my wife crazy taking pictures of public infrastructure while we're on vacation. Or that um I collected from other places. So this first one in the corner, this is uh Peter Kagayama, he's the urban planner that gave the speech that we used to listen to. And he is currently posing with the smallest park in America. It is Mills End Park and it is literally one tree in the middle of our area. But the community leaned into it, they put a sign up and it's part of their downtown tourism district now. Um this is in um. Uh city in the United Kingdom, uh Chester, and the, they had in one of their town squares, a bunch of these just wooden planter boxes. They were all built, each box was built by a different community organization. They got to put a little plaque on that said built by whoever. And it just brought some wonderful. Greenery to their downtown for little to no cost and a very movable, non-permanent piece of infrastructure. Um this is from Charlottesville, uh North Carolina, uh for Public Safety Week. You know, we're all very used to here in North Canton, the high school banners. For Public Safety Week, they do banners with pictures of their first responders on them. And so one side has, at least for the fire ones, had the firefighter in their turnout gear and some sort of. Saying about, you know, test your smoke detectors or some sort of public safety message. And the other side of the banner had the same first responder in their dress blues with their name and unit number. Um this is in Cardiff, Wales, so this is the front of their um art. Like our civic center, there's this obviously much bigger, they're a much bigger city than us, and it has this. Glass wall of windows across the front entrance. And every summer, they bid out somebody painting a temporary mural. On their glass window. And it stays for the summer and then it gets washed off at the end of the year and everybody waits to see what gets painted next year. Um this is from the city of York in the United Kingdom. It is a timeline of their city's history. On their main street, just embedded into the sidewalk. So as you walk down their main street, you can just look down and see the history of their city. And every roughly fifty years, they add another. Bit of stone and it gets a little bit further down Main Street and a little bit more public art. Brings to our community. And then finally, this one is really the one that captured Catherine and I's imagination the most. Um this is from a program um from a town in North Carolina called Mice on Main. And so the story goes that a boy scout came to the mayor. At the time, they were doing a public engagement thing of how can we make our downtown better? And a boy scout came and said, if you give me five hundred dollars. I want to hide brass mice. Mouse-sized brass mice around downtown. And it was only five hundred dollars, so the mayor said, what the heck? Sure. If everybody hates the mice, we can always take them out later. So that boy scout put up five mice to start. And just hid them around town. This is my favorite one. He's um, everybody knows crosswalks, you hit the button and you wait for the little white man to show. He is hanging out of the little white man's black box, just under the white guy. They now have twenty-three mice hidden up and down their main street. They have a trail. It brings, I forget how many tourists Peter said it brings them every year. And businesses ask the city, will you please hide a mouse on my facade and add me to the trail? And it's a type of, it's just the tiniest little thing that just brings joy to people's lives. They say of. You're watching people walk down your main street looking for these little mice and they stop in front of your store and they're like, okay. The hint, because the key to the trail is they don't tell you exactly where they are. They just give you a hint of like, there's one at the bookshop above the door. And they say it brings tons of people to walk their downtown in search of these mice. So these are the types of projects that we're envisioning. No single one is hundreds of thousands of dollars and no single one. Will make our downtown beautiful, but each one can be meaningful and contribute to making downtown beautiful. And building our community.
We talk a lot about like Wall students and having something that brings them down, you know, the downtown area brings other people down. I've said, you know, mice on main, we can have squirrels on the square, you know, I mean, you got a lot of those. Um so in that picture there, Pe- Peter Kagayama, he um, the name of his book was For the Love of Cities. It's um. A love affair between people and their places. And the thing that the quote Ben said that stuck out to him was small projects done with great love. For me, in the beginning, I was sitting there and he, you know, thinking with my cynical North Canton hat on, that people are gonna say, well, you know. This costs money, this, there's a cost, right? There's a cost. And he also said, there's also a cost, you know, to not having. Not being a cool city, not having fun things, you know, there's a, there's a cost, there's also a value. And that's what you have to get out of your head so much. And so he's, you know, we talk about public art, think about it, when you're in other cities, you know, where do you see this? I would say one thing we have is Pabs, when they did their mural of the three icons eating the ice cream. Look at that, people stand by it, they take pictures, they get into the grammat. We talk about Louisville and their umbrella alley. What makes you cool? What's your cool factor? Why do people come? And we don't wanna say, you know, exactly what we want, like that's why we want submissions and we wanna vote on it. And I reached out to the author, um. Peter, after we, after he did his um seminar at the, at the conference we were at, and I told him, you know, here's what we're thinking of doing. And he was super. I didn't think he would get back to me, he's a busy guy and he was super positive and and said, I'd love to see where this goes. Uh beauty on main and he, you know, he said you could take that even further and, you know, keep expanding upon that. I forget what he said, like um, whatever he came up with. Different like, I don't know.
He, he sent us back a whole list.
He had a whole way to keep it going.
On main thing, like barbecue on main.
Yeah, he said your community will take it, cause that mice on main, there's a book now, there's a children's book called Mice on Main. That somebody wrote about this, or wrote about this community and all the little mice that are hiding throughout their, their community. So. We're excited to see what our community will come up with. And it's time, it's time we be cool. I mean, I know there's been some people that I've spoken to about this, they kinda had that face like, ah, we're gonna. Start painting brick or, you know, cause you see, you know, some cities have the, the big trash cans or planters. That have some paintings, some art on them and we've just never had that in North Canton, but why not? You know, so this is the, the start of it to bring some beauty on main. Why not?
Really cool idea.
Yeah, I think, I think we have no idea what, what's gonna come out of it. That's what's exciting.
So we're, we're very hopeful that um the community will be very willing to at least participate in through the voting system with us and. Um while we do, we are excited for the votes and what ideas come, uh we are even more excited to get started. So our first. R F P for our first project is probably gonna go out later this week.
Who do we make our check to?
City of Ohio.
Can pay on the website.
I think it's a great idea. Well done.
Thank you. We have heard people say that's what we're lacking. We're la- lacking a little bit of that in our community, art, public art, so. So get it started.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Final call for new business?
May nineteenth will have a committee of the whole, May probably sixth will have no meeting for the holiday. Uh June second, we'll have a committee of the whole. Uh June second, we'll have a committee of the whole and June ninth, we'll have a real council. I need to make the motion to.